Mr. Tisdale, all in favor? Okay. Presentation, agenda, mayor's report. He's not in the room, in the report. Noted department reports, council reports, Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Mr. Tisdale?
None.
Mr. Glavine?
None.
Mr. Shoemaker? Public agenda, citizen comments. Anyone on my left, anyone on my right? No, no. Citizen comments are now closed. We'll now move on to the policy agenda. Take it away, Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you. This is the third in a series of employee pay workshops and really as I, I'll make the same opening comments as, as I did the previous two, and that is, I'm just presenting information that you may find helpful. These are in a particular order. The first document's titled Comparing Energy or Utility Costs Over Time, and you can kind of see what all our utility costs are by month for each of the preceding seven years. And that includes Fuel Man, Coast Electric, Mississippi Power, Eagle Energy. There's another one I can't remember, and another couple I can't remember. But also, on the far right, in the, in the blue section, that just gives you an average monthly for each of those months over that seven years. So, for example, October, on the far right, over the past seven, eight years, whatever it is, the typical energy cost for all of those utilities is almost $370,000. So, anyway, it just may help you at budgeting time, but also is interesting how much a rise in, in, in fuel costs of a nickel a gallon might make, or a dime a gallon, or the savings if it drops. So, that's, that's the first document there. The second document, and again, these are things I'm curious about. We, we hear about longevity, and we, we also offer educational incentives, and we also offer tuition as part of the benefits package for employees. And you'll see that on the left side, you have all the different departments and divisions, and then moving across left to right, at the top, you see longevity highlighted in yellow. And right below that yellow section, you see what was budgeted in each of those departments and divisions, and what was actually spent. And that's spent to date, the middle of this current fiscal year. And above that yellow section, you see the total amount budgeted, in this case, $636,960, and how much was actually spent of that, $317,000. So roughly half, which is about where we would be. So folks, obviously longevity, folks are glad to get that. But as Mr. Glavine pointed out, when we talk about paychecks, don't forget, folks get longevity as well, as a benefit. The middle section, the blue section, since we offer educational incentives, you see again, by department and division, how much is budgeted in each of those, as well as the total amount, 180, almost $183,000. And of that, how much of it's been spent? Well, it depends on who's, who takes advantage of that incentive. Then the last column, the pale green tuition, how much was budgeted, 122,000. How much has been spent midway through the year? Little over 5,000. I just found that kind of interesting, but you can see where it was budgeted in different departments and so forth. So maybe something to think about at budget time. Just have a feeling we're going to be looking for whatever dollars we can find.
Well, in that case, that adds up to about 940,000. So what was it last year?
For what?
Well, you just run off, 636 to 182 to 122.
What was it last year? I hadn't looked at that yet. I'm sure if Ms. Thornton was here, if Dinah was here, I'm sure she could look it up and tell us, but just shoot me an email, leave me a message on the phone, I'll try and run it down. So anyway, that, that
Okay.
Really covers that document. The next document is, is comparing us, it's a, figures come from the general fund that was found online. You can go to a site and see the audits from different cities, different municipal audits. And so you can see Biloxi's, this is for fiscal year 2022 and for fiscal year 2021. But I put a link to the city so that you can go and, if you wanted to follow that audit, you can go right to it. And in, in looking at the population, I put a link there so you can see the source for the population. But anyway, across the top, that's just total revenue. For example, in Biloxi, this fiscal year 2022, we actually took in almost $77 million, and Gulfport took in, and they're, again, this is general fund, little over 68 million. DeIverville, little over 21 million, and Ocean Springs, little over 17 million. And then to the right of that, you see fiscal year 2021. But what I did was I went, I went through each of these and on the, for the expenditures and broke it down as best that I could. You'll see that it's not strictly departments under the different sections on expenditures. You have general government, and what's included in general government is not necessarily the same from one city to another. I'll get to that in a moment. Then you have economic development, pretty much the same, then you have culture and recreation. We never hear culture and recreation, but in audits, they have a section, and sometimes different departments are lumped together, but here, pretty much recreation and culture is just recreation. You see public safety is how they refer to it, which is police and fire. Then public works, and you see the total expenditures, a couple of lines from the bottom, again, by city, by fiscal year. And the expenditures per resident, and I just stuck that in there because I could. It's an easy calculation on a spreadsheet, followed by the excess of revenues over expenditures. All right? So then if you'll turn to the next page, and highlight it in blue, and remember, if you went back and looked at the first page, general government, what does that general government heading include? In Biloxi, that includes the administration, the executive department, the administration department, the legislative department, and the legal department, as best I could determine. What does that mean in Gulfport? Well, in Gulfport, theirs was simple, they just had a section, and that's, that's how their audit broke it out, is general government. And that's what DeIverville did as well. And in Ocean Springs, they broke it out a little bit differently in their audit, so I, I just lumped what was roughly what we do, executive, legislative, supervision, and finance, judicial, safety, and human resources. So if you, if you look for each of those headings, whether it's general government, economic development, you can see, as best I could determine, so that we could be talking and measuring apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Then that section in pink, at the bottom half of page two, these are expenditures broken out by category, and you may recognize personnel services, supplies, other services and charges, and capital outlay. So I combined those and, and through, under the heading expenditures across for each city for each of the two years, and below that is, I expressed it as a percent of their total budget, and then that last section is cost per resident, and then just because I could and I was interested. So, does this allow you accurate comparisons? Well, it sort of depends, but it just gives you an idea, frame of reference. This next document is titled Full-Time Equivalent City Employees by Program. And you can see that starting in, in 2002, is when the city started noting these in their annual audits. At the time, it was called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, but it's a city audit. And different, at different times, this, these figures were included, maybe under a particular heading, and you can see that in years 2002 through 2005, they just broke it down into general government, police, and fire. That's as much detail as they went into, and then that line at the bottom there just gives you a total number of employees that year. Then when you get to year 2006 to 2020, they broke it down consistently over that number of years. Then we didn't see anything in the audit or CAFR for those years since then, and I think to some degree, it, it may be how these, some of these accounting firms do this, or it may be that the city didn't ask or request that it be broken down, and that maybe is something we want to ask for next, for this next audit that we do, is, we'd like to know the number of employees. I know that question comes up periodically, particularly at budget time from several of us. Then you see in May of 2004, that section in yellow, the mayor was able to provide at my request, he gave me a breakdown of the employees in each of those departments or under each of those headings, and also the number of vacancies at that time. Now, that's roughly a month ago, five weeks ago, maybe six weeks ago. But the, the indication there is that's 685 employees, which includes how many we have working in the city in May, as well as the 41 vacancies. So, over time, you can see that 2002, we had 654 employees. In May of 2024, we had 685 proposals. And the, I had a couple of notes there at the bottom. That last note really, as you may recall, the city annexed Wool Market in 1999. I can't tell you, I bet Chief Geiser could tell you how many, not off the top of his head, but I bet he could calculate with the annexation of Wool Market, here we are 20 years later, over 20 years later, almost 25 years later, and I, I bet you have a lot more fire hydrants to drain and maintain, and I'm sure public works and engineering have a lot more territory to cover, and so that's just something to think about, code enforcement, and it almost doubled the size of the city at the time, as I recall.
Mr. Tisdale?
Number of ditches to maintain.
On the, on this report that you're showing, the number of employees, are these full-time equivalents, or these, these are bodies?
These are, these are full-time equivalents up at the
So they're full-time equivalents?
Full-time equivalents, based, based
Based on three hours a week?
Based on the audits, through 2020, and then based on the report that the mayor gave me. One thing that I, so having said that, I don't, I don't believe it includes summer hires, okay? And I don't know how many summer hires we have total, but wouldn't surprise me if we had another 40. I don't know, but that's just seasonal. Okay, the next document, and again, this came from the, the comprehensive financial annual reports or the annual audit, and there's a section in the city audit that's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And it kind of fills you in with a little explanation, lets you know what you started with and what you ended with, and that first column to the left is the fiscal year, the second column is the general fund balance at the end of the year. And you see that in, in the 2022 audit, the end of the year balance was 19, little over 19 million. Well, looks like a lot of money. What we don't know, and it is a lot of money, what we don't know is how many, I guess, items were ordered but not delivered in that fiscal year, and so some of this money then is carried, ends up being carried over to the next year, when you, you clean up the books and everything. But I thought this was interesting. From time to time, people ask me, is the city broke? Well, I don't know, maybe that's a point in time question, but I don't think we're broke. But still, it's interesting. If you go to the second page, in 2009, when Ms. Newman was in the eighth grade, you can see that, that fiscal year, the city ended with 27 million and something, and I'm sure it was probably more, I'm guessing it was probably more in preceding years, simply because this followed in the wake of Katrina, so you had a lot of money flowing in here at that time. Okay? So anyway, that may be something to look over. The next document is, I'll, I'll call it the $13 an hour document. So let me just take a few minutes and explain what you're looking at. So you've got a spreadsheet, and it says Ordinance 2501, which is approved in January of 2023, so a little over a year ago, 15 months ago. And the basic pay rate was $13, and we, remember, we went to a pay band. So if you look at the first, second, third, fourth heading from the left, you see what the maximum pay band is for grade 12 and a grade 13. That's currently what we have. I don't have the minimum listed, but I do have the maximum listed. However, and I've pushed this for a number of years, what if, just for discussion purposes or for, for an exercise in thought, what if we went back to a, what they call a grade and step structure, so that if you started at $13 on step one, and you had a one and a half percent increase the following year, you'd move from $13 to $1320, and a one and a half percent increase, and I just showed the first eight steps here, but you, you can see what the hourly increase would be. I don't want to, and I've got some questions listed down there at the bottom for discussion. Again, that's just for you to be thinking about. If you look at the second page of this document, you get not the hourly rate, but the equivalent salary. So for example, on grade 12 in step one, if you're making $13 an hour, that comes out to a little over $27,000 a year. And if you got a one and a half percent raise, the next year you are here, that would go to 27,45 or about 400, what, 405 dollars? And then the following year, another one and a half percent, it would go up another little over 400 bucks or whatever. I would prefer that for a number of reasons, but this is just an, an example, a sample, if you will, and maybe food for thought and a discussion in the coming weeks or months.
Paul, did you run a total?
Beg your pardon?
Did you like, you did the $13, and you said the next year was $15, what's the difference? How much is a plus?
Thank you.
How much total money?
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I'm going to get there in just a minute. That's going to be the next handout I cover, okay? But looking at this $13 an hour, all right, page one is the hourly rate, page two is the equivalent salary, page three is the police department. And doing a bit of research, police officers and the fire department are paid on two different funky kind of scales. It's, it's like trying to understand offsides in soccer, if you're not familiar with the concept. But police officers work basically 21, 2,184 hours a year. The typical employee, not police or fire, works about 2,080, and you arrive at that number by 52 weeks times 40 hours a week. So you see the different ranks there on the left, and the next column over says approximate pay grade. I'll come back to that in a moment. Then you see step one, step two, step three. So if this, if, if the police were on a similar pay grade and step compensation schedule, where, where would you place them? And that's where that approximate pay grade would, would come in. You might place a patrol officer third class at pay grade 20, patrol officer second class at pay grade 23, and that is nothing more than an approximation. But, but if you move from where we are now, a pay band model, back to a stepping grade model, then it would be, if you were looking to unify a compensation schedule, you could do that with the other departments, that's, that's not really complicated, but when it comes to police and fire, what if you included them on a, on a grade and step, put them on a particular step? The question is, if you move back to a grade and step, and you calculate what they're making, where are you going to place them on that stepping grade? But again, if, if you had a unified compensation schedule, then if you had a one and a half percent increase that affected everybody across the board, or it could be a flat rate, $500 a year, $372 a year, or whatever. But at, at least folks would understand why they were placed, where they're placed, and with a step increase annually, unless they didn't get a satisfactory evaluation or appraisal, then at least you know where you're going and what you can count on in future years. Okay? At the bottom of the blue section, the equivalent salary, you can see currently what those different ranks make. And I'll go through the fire department quickly, because it's even, I can't explain it, you'd have to have the folks in the fire department explain it. But you see the ranks there in the column on the left, an approximate pay grade if you were going to move to a unified compensation schedule, and an example of what they would make with a percent and a half increase each year. I chose a percent and a half because off the top of my head, I think that might be sustainable. It may not be, it could be that 1.8% is sustainable, I don't think 2% would be sustainable. The only notes that I have at the top there, and Chief, you can't, you don't see what I'm, what we're seeing, but you have firefighter one, firefighter two A, firefighter, I don't understand the two As, the Cs, the Bs. I think that's probably resulting from an accommodation of pay raises over the years. If you want to, I just don't want to get bogged down, but, but I'm, I'm thinking, would that be accurate or no, am I off base?
A, B, and C?
Get in front of the mic, please, thanks.
A, B, and C resulted from the, if you remember, back in the early part of the current mayor's time when he did the 3%, 4%, 5%?
Correct.
That's A, B, and C, so you can kind of break it down that way.
I got you. So that, that was a result of the way that the, the, based on the pay increase, because it was a different percentage.
Right. If you had so many years, you got 3%.
Exactly.
So many years, you got 4%.
Exactly.
So many years, you got 5%.
Right. The only difference there is not in their responsibilities or what they're accountable for, it's just how many years they were here on the job, whether they got the 3%, 4%, 5%. Okay? Again, the, I want to point out that the fire department hours, most folks that work for the city work 2,080 hours. If you're on the fire department, you're working shift work, you're on 24 hours at a time, so they work a total of 2,910 hours during the year. So anyway, again, this is food for thought for the council to look at and consider. Maybe it triggers something, maybe it doesn't. All right, the next document, and in the lower right-hand corner, you see $15. So, Mr. Lawrence, in answer to your question, if you started with a base rate of $15 an hour, you can see step one, $15 an hour. If you flip to the next page, you'll see the equivalent salary. That salary would be $31,200. So for example, the difference in an hourly rate of $13 an hour to $15 an hour, $13 an hour gets you right at 27,000 a year, whereas $15 an hour gets you roughly a $4,200 increase.
I understand, but I was, what is the total amount? A million, million and a half? What is the total?
That I can't answer, because I don't know how, how many of each type of employees we have.
That's what we need to know up here.
That's what, that's what the, that's something the administration would have to put together for us, because I don't, you know, I don't know how many firefighter
Hey, what you did here is fine, but that's
Right.
And I, Chief Miller, what is the, the people that you're losing roughly going to, what kind of salary in different police departments? Are we that far out of line?
We're not, we're not that far out of line, but we are, we are, we're way down below where we were at one time, you know, with how, how we ranked along the coast.
Yeah.
When I talked to the sheriff yesterday, the sheriff told me that, that they're going to do a pay raise here shortly with them, and then I saw the news last night where the Mississippi Highway Patrol had moved starting pay to 51,000 and, and something. So we've lost, we lost one to, to DeIverville, and that part of that was pay, and part of it was the fact that they didn't have to work so many event hours. And then we lost one just a little while ago, I got his letter, and it, I think he's going back, he's going to Jackson County, and one of the reasons was pay and of having to work, you know, so many hours. So, but we're, we're, I, I can't even tell you where we're at now, but we're, we're not even like in third anymore, anything like that.
They're probably leaving the city because they, they go to make 450,000, or whatever, something like that.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea?
Majority of it is pay. And then some, then, then the next complaint is going to be the amount of hours that they have to work here.
And either most of them are patrol?
Most of them are patrolmen, yes, sir. Between patrolmen and dispatchers, now we've, I think we've kind of dealt with the dispatch pay here recently, and I, I think that's going to, that's going to help us with dispatch, but we're a critical level, critical level with dispatch. By this time next year, we'll have several of our senior people in dispatch that will retire, and if we, we're not able to find some people, we'll put them in there, we're really going to be in trouble there. I don't mind saying that. I mean, we're going to be in real hot water.
That's, that's a tough job. That's some 12-hour shifts, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We moved from eight-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts some years back, just simply because we didn't have enough manpower to maintain eight-hour shifts.
I just thought you'd like to know all that, too. Appreciate all the information, it's pretty good.
Well, thank, oh, thank you.
Might I say something?
Thank you, Mr. George.
Director, I'm sorry, Director Miller, just real quick, I know you said a lot of the dispatchers are going to be retiring, but is it critical because of retiring at one time, or is it still critical because of pay? Or both?
Well, like I said, I, I think we were able to do some things with the ranking a week or so ago. I think that's going to help a lot, but you know, it's a job, first of all, that about probably at least half that we try to hire wash out of, they, it's, it's a very stressful, you know, high-speed job, so we lose a, a lot for that reason. And then just kind of like, you know, the defunding of the police movement had its effect, and it's kind of the same, you know, they're, they're considered part of the police department. You don't have a lot of people that want to get back into that business, period. So it's going to, and honestly, you know, my opinion is it's going to take money to pull people back in there.
And that's both dispatch and, and just patrol?
Dispatch and, and, and police, yeah. That's what it's going to take.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The last, last document is just a budget planning form that I put together that I, I would suggest and hope that the administration would provide the following information. I think it would better help us plan and determine our priorities, and would also show some evidence of administrative planning. I share the chief's concern. I mean, the police department really is the best slash worst example of where we are and how competitive it's become for employees, and unless we, we do something, and I, I believe this council will do something, then I think we're going to face these same challenges in other departments. We, we seem to be least competitive, just in eyeballing some of the data in, in law enforcement, but there, there are some challenges in firefighting in that department and just in getting enough bodies to come to work. And I'm sure, just in looking at the revenue from the monthly financial reports that we, we get periodically from the, the finance department, we're going to be scratching for dollars to put together some sort of, of pay increase, but it's, it's got to be done. We've got to find the revenue. We, we need to do that. I, it triggered another thought. At some point, we're going to be having a meeting with the insurance committee, we'll hear from SI again, and then we'll have a, last year, we had a group probably of about 16 or 18 people from different departments that would come that we shared all from different departments that would come that we shared all the information with. We're going to do the same thing sometime in July. And then I think at that point, we will have some idea of the cost of insurance and that employees at least are informed about. And the folks that have come to this group, we wanted people who would convey accurate information to the other employees. But that was one piece we wanted to have at the beginning of the budgeting process. And the administration will be coming to us in in a couple of weeks in July, three or four weeks from now, and we'll start these budget sessions. The second piece was, and I would hope that we would get the compensation piece out of the way first, followed by the employee insurance. And then when the dust settles, see what we have and determine our priorities and budgeting. That's the way I'd like to see this unfold. But that really concludes everything I had planned to present. The only other thing I did was I contacted the Stennis Institute of Government and asked what they they take on projects and there's a charge for that. But I asked about if we wanted to overhaul our compensation schedule, what would that cost us if they did a study to do that? And just in a nutshell, it cost about $7,800. And I'm thinking that may be something, I think we've got to do something about compensation very shortly, but it may be in next year's budget. Maybe we want to look at spending a little more time and have somebody come in and and make some suggestions to help guide us. Question.
Yeah, I just, I'd also like to point this out. It's going to take money, no doubt about it. But just take the Highway Patrol, for example. The Highway Patrol starts off at 51,000, but there's more, there's more than the 51,000 because the Highway Patrol retirement is 25 years. And anybody that's looking for, really looking for a profession that they're going to sustain, you know, till retirement, is not going to want to come to to a municipality for a 30 year retirement at 50%, you know, when the Highway Patrol can give you 25 years at 70%. So the pay would have to, the pay would have to be the thing that they were looking at. It'd have to be more than the 51,000 in the door in order to to be attractive.
Right.
That's what we're dealing with.
There's a lot of things to weigh, and then that's why the challenge is greatest in the police department. Everybody else is scrambling and you're competing against other municipalities, but also state agencies and to some degree, the feds.
Oh, absolutely.
But having said that, with PERS, the public employees retirement system, you have different funds. You have, I call it the vanilla version for teachers and other state employees, and you have a special fund for legislators, you have a special fund for the Highway Patrol. I think there's one other one. And they calculate those benefits differently than the the basic PERS, folks like teachers and typical city employees. So yeah, it's, I mean, they're, they're, thank you, chief, for your input.
Chief, do they get insurance or anything with Highway Patrol? What other benefits they get?
They do, and I can't tell you exactly what their benefits package is, but I can, I can find that out. Another issue was, you know, at one time, the Highway Patrol would not accept a city policeman. You had to go through the Highway Patrol Academy. Well, that that's kind of turned around now. They will accept experience from from regular police officers now.
Wow. Thank you. That's really all I have, Madam President.
Anyone else?
Real quick, real quick. Chief Geiser. And I understand the challenges are different, obviously, with the police department and why they stay so shorthanded. What about you guys?
We face a lot of the same. It's not necessarily within the state in Mississippi, but the 30 year retirement is is a major effect because we have two departments just out of state, 45 minutes away, that are running 20 year retirements. Their pay is a little bit better. They give incentives for paramedics, EMTs, that sort of thing. So, you know, a lot of the challenges for us is they can, you know, they can drive 45 minutes depending on where they live here locally. And, you know, if they're a 22 year old, they're getting out at 42 versus 52. So we're running into a lot of the same things and, you know, we're, we're kind of more competing with our neighbors Mobile and Slidell, St. Tammany. You know, a lot of times we do okay with the local here. Now, I know our pay is a touch lower than some of our local departments, DeIverville, Ocean Springs, a lot of them, their starting pay is better than ours, by a small margin. But and then benefits wise, I know DeIverville pays a little bit more on their insurance. I think Ocean Springs is real competitive with us. But, you know, we try to stay in touch with with our local, local chiefs and try to, you know, see where everybody stands.
Okay, okay.
I want to say, I want to say, based on the information that I'd received earlier from police and fire, when our first budget little workshop we did on this, I think I tried to draw a comparison on the current pay situation between each of the cities for comparative purposes. And it's difficult to some extent. You have maybe different ranks and what they mean, different titles or positions. But anyway, if you go back and look at handouts two and three, you remember those handouts? And I'll put these all online at my website for anybody who wants to look at them. But that would give you some idea of how we stack up with our our neighbors around us.
I do remember that, by the way.
There'll be a test, there'll be a test on it.
But yeah, our big thing, some of your better, you know, we're getting good candidates. Don't get me wrong. We've got great guys coming in, but a lot of your, a lot of your good guys are just looking right there at Slidell or Mobile and hopping that way because they can, you know, it's, it's a quick turnaround and.
Right. Okay. Thank you, chief. Lastly, I don't want to diminish any other department. My personal opinion, every city employee needs a pay raise. And quite honestly, some of the lower paid, the $13 and the laborers, some animal control, some secretaries that are making the least in the city. And I don't know how we can do it or if we can do it, but maybe they need to get a bigger pay raise, a bump at the end. I don't know. I mean, if it's, they're the lowest paid now and they're going to be the lowest paid when we give them a raise. So I don't know what we can do. I know we have more time to look at that, but hopefully we can do something. And that's all I have.
Well, just be thinking about where where we can find revenue. That's it, Miss President, Madam President. Thank you. Soon to be Mrs. President, huh?
Peter, are you going to, you going to be able to handle this report that we asked for? The one that.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, so no.
Motion by Mr. Geiser.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? unanimous vote, meeting adjourned. Great job.
Thank you. On these steps.
Chief, chiefs.
Yeah, I got, I got enough, I got enough copies to give you and Nick a copy just so you follow along. But I just kind of went through it very quickly and a lot of this stuff, some of this stuff I'm sure won't fly. But anyway, that's a copy of the handout, the last.
What happened to him?